This meeting of the Cedarburg Board of Education, April 27th, 2015. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Education, public meeting and prior notice has been placed in the district as well as in the news graphic in the Washington Journal Center. And please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First of all, we're a business election officer. The nomination for president.
I'll nominate Mr. Breck.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Nomination for vice president.
I'll nominate Kevin Kennedy.
I will second that.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Clerk?
I'll nominate Jeff Breck. He does the heck of a job.
I will second that.
And a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Yes. I'd nominate Mr. Meisner, but it looks like...
How can you not this between these guys?
Well, a motion is a motion is a motion.
Did you want to, did you say what to nominate?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Meisner, but it looks like...
You can do that.
I can do that?
Sure.
I'm in on my office.
Sure, I'll second that.
Alright, so we have a little... In a second, on both of those. Now, according to Robert's rules, do I have to take one who's first first for a vote? I just thought so.
Yeah, that's why they don't make a big motion.
Alright, I don't...
I totally dropped my motion.
Do you like to look at your motion this way?
Yeah, give me a few passes up your porch.
I always drop my motion of Mr. Breck.
Okay.
But the whole board has the vote to approve that.
Right.
Because it belongs to the body now.
Right.
Do I nominate him?
Is that a three second?
Huh?
Do the draw have three seconds?
Ah, yes. The second repurchase should nominate for you.
Okay, so we have a withdraw and we need a second.
Sure.
And that was Phil who had the second, an initial motion that first withdrawing. So if you would care to go with Rick and draw his motion, you would say, "I second that."
You want?
I second.
Alright, so a motion in a second. On Rick's motion to withdraw his motion of Jeff Breck. For clerk, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Rick.
You're right. So, going back to the motion, we have a motion for Mr. Meisner to become clerk for the school board and that was first by Jeff and second by I. Is that correct?
Correct.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries unanimously.
Congratulations, Mr. Breck.
Wow, that was close. Mark? I got... Take a... Motion for treasurer.
I'll nominate you to approve.
I'll second my motion.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mark.
And school board secretary? Take the motion?
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Alright. Get your pen ready, Mr. Meisner. Alright, uh, board committees and board assignments are the next, uh, next topic on the agenda. And, uh, as you, you guys all know, the current committees that you're on, so that makes us a nice and easy exercise. If you wish to switch around a little bit, um, please let me know. Um, but what we'll do is just operate as assigned at this point. Would you like that within a week or something? Can you tell us when you have? Uh, yeah, within a week. I mean, uh, we won't, we won't address it until next meeting, but just operating on this for right now. And we will also keep the special assignments, which is item six, as is, unless anyone would like to change, that seems to be working, uh, well. And, uh, you know, it's only been a year that we've had this current structure, so, um, although some people have been in some roles for years, but it seems to be working. So, if anyone would like to change, again, please let me know. And then we'll move on to item number seven, resolutions and recommendations. Mr. Kennedy? School Nutrition Week, you have a proclamation.
May you use your special. Okay. The School Nutrition Employee Week official proclamation. Whereas nutritious meals at school are an essential part of the school day and whereas the staff of the district's school meals nutrition department are committed to providing health, helpful nutritious meals to the district's children. And whereas the men and women who prepare and serve school meals help nurture our children through their daily interaction and support. And whereas the week of May 4th through 8th of 2015 is School Nutrition Employee Week. Now therefore be it resolved, Cedarburg School District expresses deep appreciation to those valuable employees and commend their good work on behalf of children. Thank you. Next proclamation is for Teacher Appreciation Week. Whereas teachers make public schools great and whereas teachers work to open students' minds to ideas, knowledge, and dreams. And whereas teachers keep American democracy alive by laying the foundation for good citizenship. And whereas teachers fill many roles as listeners, explorers, role models, motivators, and mentors. And whereas teachers continue to influence us long after our school days are only memories. Now therefore be it resolved that Cedarburg School District proclaims May 4th through 8th of 2015 as National Teacher Appreciation Week. And be it further resolved that Cedarburg School District strongly encourages all members of our community to join in with personally expressing appreciation to our teachers for their dedication and devotion to their work and the impact they have on our lives.
Next item? Do you like the red? Uh, congratulations to Ms. Victoria Benson on receiving Yamaha Corporation America's Port Music Medal Award. This award raises visibility and advances community support for innovative, trailblazing music education programs providing students with access to comprehensive music education. There were 120 schools nationwide and five schools from Wisconsin receiving this award. Congratulations to Victoria. Congratulations also to the following Webster students for their artwork submitted to the UW, Washington County's UWWC. Uh, 2015 Student Artwork Contest. Giovanni Frong, eighth grade, took first place in collage prints category. A.J. Patrick, seventh grade, took third place in drawing. Honorable mention to awarded to Isabel Covert, eighth grade, 3D media. Jared Paul, eighth grade, 3D media. And Kendall Robinson, sixth grade drawing. All artwork was displayed at University, Wisconsin, Washington County at the Festival of Arts on April 18th, 2015. Congratulations to Nicholas Roster, sixth, uh, senior high school senior selected as a semifinalist to advance to the final round of the 2015 U.S. Presidential Scholars Competition. Of nearly 3.3 million graduating high school seniors, over 4,300 were identified as candidates in the program and 565 semifinals have been selected from across the country. Congratulations to individuals. Excellent. Awesome. Alright. Item number eight, consent again. Uh, in the packet, please see minutes for the regular meeting, March 18th. The budget financial, um, accounts. And as our practice, uh, we would like to, uh, let you guys come read, please read the personnel.
Thank you. This evening, before you, I'll start with the classified staff and work upwards. We have Corey Weigerling, an aide from Parkview who left the district. We've hired Kimberly Steffen, an aide at Parkview, and Elizabeth Gutman, an aide at Webster. And Cole Cofte has changed from a paraprofessional to fill in as a district nurse for the rest of this year. Moving to the professional employees, we have two resignations. Rachel Hans, the district nurse, resigned effective April 14th. And Eric White, social studies teacher at the high school, resigned effective at the end of the school year. Before you, we have the administrator contract for our new director of curriculum instruction, Mr. Alan Growth. He's here this evening. I... Raise your hand, Alan. We're excited to have him joining our team. I'll let Mr. Vignanek speak to that a little more.
Absolutely. We are thrilled to have Alan Growth join our Cedarburg team. And welcome Alan's experience and expertise. He has knowledge in curriculum development, school improvement, destruction, technology, personalized learning. Brings a wealth of information and experience and knowledge to the district. He is truly a child-centered educator who has the passion, energy, and intellect to, uh, lead the district and help us with our improvement efforts. He's an extremely well-respected educator in person and I'm thrilled to have him joining our team. Please, please join me. Welcome Alan Growth to the district.
Alan has done amazing things for the Missygoe Norway School District as both a principal and a director of learning.
I believe is the title they use there for curriculum instruction and assessment. So we have that contract and then we also have the annual, uh, time of year when the board approves contract renewal for our existing staff for next year. Uh, per state statutes, we need to have those issued to our teachers by May 15th and then they need to return them by June 15th. You have two separate lists. One is for all of our regular full-time renewing contracts. That's pretty standard. And then you have a second list that is our part-time contracts or our just one-year full-time contracts. Under the statute, the only contracts that are regularly renewable are full-time. Part-time contracts do not automatically renew per the statute. And so we have those two separate lists. We do like to issue part-time contracts to our part-time teachers that we know we're going to have back. Uh, we do those at the same time as the full-time. There are probably a few positions that we still have hanging out there that we're looking at and analyzing and making sure we know how we're going to staff those before we would issue those contracts. So we ask for your approval for all of those this evening.
Take a motion this time?
I'd like one more to finish reading this contract before I make a motion.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I would since I'm reading too.
Is there really change in this contract language since the last meeting?
No, this is the standard administrative contract that we should all administrators.
Not last?
Uh, we only changed the dental insurances, a part of the budget proposals, so that we didn't make that change.
Wish we changed in all?
Exactly.
And couldn't those last 70s for signing? Administer contracts in this form?
Uh, these would go back to last year when we issued renewed contracts. I think we did in the fall for 1517 contracts.
Okay, and so just to be clear, the only change from that time to this time is the dental language track.
Right. And employees' contribution will be increasing for dental insurance.
But by all means, read, Mr. Counselor, we can make a head.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion?
I will second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. I want that.
Alright. Then we ran law enforcement recommendations. Uh, first item, recommend the Board of Education accept a $999 donation to U.S. Super High School for their 183 program. Move to approve?
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Recommend the Board of Education accept a donation, uh, from Mrs. Donna Kalenko of an upright piano raised at $1,000 to be used by Cedarburg High School Music Department. Move to approve?
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. I recommend the Board of Education accept a donation from Ryan Olson, David Whitley, for $500 to be used by Cedarburg High School Jazz Singers. Move to approve?
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Recommend the Board of Education accept the donation of $580 from Wells Fargo Foundation Education Matching Gift Program and Wells Fargo Community Support Campaign to be used by Parkview Elementary School for its PBIS expenses. Move to approve?
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
We're both watching online. Can we tell what PBIS is?
Positive Behavior Interventional Support.
Thank you. What is it? Positive Behavior Interventional Support. And support. Thank you.
Centered Schoolwide Behavior Plan.
Alright. Thank you. I have a key. Karen?
Leslie, Wednesday at the PNF Committee, we met and we reviewed the 2015-16 budget recommendations. After the meeting, I did forward the documents to the board members that were not at the meeting and it was also included in your board packet. The document in your packet contains additional information that was, um, distributed at the PNF meeting and that information was, um, in red font. Um, I'll briefly go over the memo and the recommendations that you received in your board packet. It is recommended that the board prepare for post-2015-16 budget recommendations. As in prior years, the budget will continuously be updated as staffing enrollments are finalized. Also, we'll be monitoring the state biennial budget and the $150 per pupil categorical aid that, um, currently is recommended as a reduction in revenue. If you go to the first page of the packet. This is the list of the budget recommendations and as discussed at the meeting, the numbers down the side of each item correspond with the impact statements that were included. You can see if you go to the bottom, we currently have a deficit of $516 and this doesn't, does include budgeting for the $150. And also that is the entry, we're going to change our entry for our bonus program, which was approved by our auditor. On the backside of that reconciliation, at the PNF Committee, we, um, a couple of people were looking at it in different ways. So what I tried to do here is consolidate some of the items so you could look at it in more of a condensed version. If you just look at the top, you can see our total budget gap was to 333,000. And to that I added the open enrollment, decreasing revenue, and that, that is for the 12 kids. We lose 12 kids going out this year as seniors. Um, so that's 112,000 to break into the 445,973 dollars. And then I actually, where it was included at the bottom before, this is the decrease for the per pupil aid, the 471,000. So you can see we started out with a deficit of 877,673. And then the next section, that shows all the, um, changes to the assumptions from when I initially presented this in February. So that was 165,584. Um, for an adjusted budget gap that we started that, um, at was 712,89 dollars. And then what I did is I just, um, took the items and tried to consolidate them. And you can see, um, the last column there is the reconciliation number. So if you want to try to match those up, you can, um, the first item is increasing student fees, 50,000. Um, we did increase teacher staffing by 2.7 FTE and that's estimated to be 156,000. So we did have adds to the budget. And then you can see we also added, um, open, um, course option open, or pardon, course option tuition, tuition budget for 12,000. And then the rest of the way down are all the reductions that we talked about at the meeting, again, to get us to the 516 amplic to reduce. Then if you go to page one, the impact statements, um, these again correspond with the numbers and you can see all the additional information is provided in red. Um, the first item of additional information is on page three. So what I tried to do here, there was some discussion about how tight is the budget getting around these areas? So I gave some history as to what the actual expenditures have been. So, um, if you look at number 11, um, we budget, um, 35,000 and we're, um, we're going to reduce it to 15,000. So that's a $20,000 saving for, for the cash flow. So then I just went on to show what the, what the actual expenditures have been in the last three years. So you feel comfortable, um, reducing that budget. On page four, um, number 13 was transferring conference substitute costs, $6,000. Um, in the red, it shows what we expect, have expended on conferences and seminars in 2013 for to the actual model of, just under 18,000. And that doesn't include literacy collaborative or, um, CISA training. Reducing the legal budget, you can see there again, including what we're estimating this year to be 50,000. We currently have a, um, 100,000 dollar budget. We're, um, reducing that to 25,000. On page six, I also included, um, information on the national conference budget that we're reducing $4,000. Uh, the next item, number 24 and 25, that's, um, the parking fee revenue and then the student fee revenue. Looking back, we actually have not increased the student fee revenue or the parking revenue, um, since I've been here, which was in, oh, 2017. We did talk about every table that said, and we look at that again in the future. So there have been no increases there. Um, the only items we've increased are athletic fees, we added forensic and debate, debate fees, and, um, every year we have to take a look at our lunch fees. So I did provide some information on that. And then also the last included in your email and in the last page of the document is the actual fees that parents are charged for the district, um, in its entirety. And then finally, the last item, which is 498,000, that's the change in how we budget and expense our, um, bonus to get everything in one year. So we won't have to budget for it next year. We're going to, what I'll do is next month, I'll bring a resolution and you will commit that amount to fund balance and then next year I'll budget for it on the fund balance. So, um, I will be bringing the resolution after the main meeting. Are there any questions?
Okay, I'll start. And just get it all though. Is, to go back to the, the student fees, the lunch, I mean, just thinking we're going to need to increase the, the bonus something?
Every year we have to look at that and we increase it slightly. We do have, um, an access in our fund balance. So what I'm doing is I'm looking at the PPI, maybe to use some of that, so we may not have to increase the fees this, this year, but I'll know that for next meeting.
Well, last time we were forced to trade up.
Right, every year we have to redo the calculation. Last year we didn't. We saved it for this year because it wasn't going to be that much. But as long as I have that access fund balance, that's one spot where I can say, you know, I'm going to put it on hold for a year. They just have to approve it now.
Another comment would be, um, we have to put PNF in a better budget. For those that weren't there to space that, all the classrooms should, all the class sizes for the district dynamics, correct?
Correct. We're monitoring, and we did talk about this too, we're monitoring kindergarten, um, like class sizes are lower than last year. So in the next, um, before the main meeting, we'll take a look at that and have more information there.
I just thought I'd give the overall, and I do some points, but...
With the class size, the things, like, I have a lot there, I guess it's not directly that. The recent article that was in the news graphic with all the new subdivisions that the city's approving. Have you looked at how that's going to affect us down the line here with all the new offering?
John Koster and I started that, so we'll have information on that too.
Okay, thank you.
But we don't expect to be impacted by that too much next year.
Karen, just, uh, by the way, clarification, 39, uh... It could cut through the steps you're taking here. At the end of the day, what will happen is that we will budget for this in the same year we really spend the bonus money.
Correct.
And in order to get there because of the path system we have used, we go to a period where essentially we're going to, uh... Put it from, put that amount that we've already allocated into the fund balance for one year and then pull it out of there, we won't budget for that.
Right, it's actually, but we budget it for one year.
And when we're done with that, we get back to...
We'll put it back in. So then that following year, we're expecting to get $165 for the per pupil allocation, so we use that to put the money back into the budget.
So that's really just, uh, if you will, like, how, like, how's clean?
Correct.
Thank you.
Um, I missed the, uh, PNF meeting and I'm wondering if, um, we had any input from, um, any students or community members on the fee increases? Are there being proposed?
We have not. What we did with those, and I do have, um, what I'm going to do is I'm going to just have pass these out. I have a memo, um, for a formal approval after this if you do approve the fees. The first one coming around is for parking fees and then the next one is, um, for the student fees.
We want to, uh, take on the PNF, which would be this whole...
Right, I just did, there's something I'm going to point out here. Chris, just an attachment of how we came up with, up with the fees.
Right, but what I'm saying is we'd like to, the way that it's noted in the agenda, it's, um, 1516 budget recommendations. So the motion would be to approve all this and last, the, um, student registration fees as well as the parking fees.
Right.
So would we want to segregate those discussions or do you guys just want to look at together and...
Why don't we just get off, and we're back to, um, look at that. I just thought she's already kind of passed it up. We could just look at it all.
Yeah, I'd actually, I'd actually prefer more kind of conservative, pretty clear.
And I have had a lot of questions on it, that's why I put a little bit more information together. Um, we always try to start an input to talk about in case we have to bring it back in the, because ultimately we need to present a student handbooks.
Yeah, I guess I'd prefer to, um, kind of put that, kind of table the fee stuff, um, so we can, we can give that a little more consideration.
Okay, well, why don't we, why don't we table that for a discussion right now? And then, uh, go on with everything listed in various documents except for the student registration fees and the parking fees. So does anyone have any questions on any items?
Mr. President, can we go back to this for a second?
Yeah.
We'll do this, then we'll back up and we'll address it at the next PNF meeting. Is that what you're thinking? Is it right to go back to the board in May?
Would you like to see?
Mine would be my personal preference, but I don't know.
My personal preference, but I, uh, I mean, goes at the PNF cabinet side on some of this, so if we'd like to back it up, I'm fine with that. Because that gives everybody more time to dig into this and for questions for Karen on the side.
How, how deeply did you go into this at PNF?
We, we talked about it, um, we talked, uh, ranges that they've looked at from other districts, um, both for the parking lot and with, I think you came up with a formula for.
That's what's attached to the memos now. So what we did is we looked at 10 different school districts and what they're charging, came up with an average, and then looked at the minimum and the maximum. And what, what we looked at for Cedarburg School District is that we raise it to the average.
Dave, I'm, I'm very comfortable if, if you want to take more time to look at it, whatever. I, uh, I was not at the PNF meeting, uh, but I did spend a fair amount of time looking at this, uh, yesterday and today. And my conclusion was that this seemed reasonable for two reasons. One was that when you went through, you know, the various districts and looked at, you know, the high, the low, and calculated the mediums and whatever else, that we were just spot on, you know, the average, whatever. But secondly, I guess, since it has been quite a while since we have increased registration fees for these two items, I felt comfortable if you looked at it over, you know, forgotten the hundred years, for instance, seven years, something like that. And you looked at it on an annualized kind of basis, we were talking about a very small amount, so I was comfortable with that. But, you know, I hadn't any more time to kind of really crunch it to remember.
Sure, and I guess, yeah, you look at the numbers and I have big numbers, but I just, I don't, I mean, I'm part of the community, so I don't know how this would, uh, process. That's my, that's my answer. Well, I don't want me to get some input, but let's just meet after the handling PNF and if there are...
I would recommend, Mr. President, we push this topic back to PNF for the May meeting and for a discussion.
Well, then we won't, then we won't take action on items F and G, but to get back to item E, would you guys like to talk about this whole document, items 24 and 25?
Have you approved, tentatively approved last year, though, that doesn't have those two numbers for sure?
What we did last year, Rick, you just, you approved this last year's numbers. You just said, we'll approve items one through 23 and then 26 through 39. That's what we did last year, there were a couple we took off.
Right. There was something we did last year, though.
So instead of $200, we're gonna be have a budget that we're preliminary approving that's gonna be about $40,000 each.
And we never, Rick, at this time, we never, last year was the first year that we approved it at April, and then we actually approved it again in May because it allowed us to move forward with staffing where we had never formally approved that before. The actual budget that's gonna be posted in the paper, that, that will actually, we actually approved of the preliminary budget. So we have all the way till July to finalize the budget, get all the publications ready, statute, in order to have a budget hearing. That, that's when you formally approve. You're approving it out, then you have the formal approval with all the publications in July.
So this approval is basically to be able to make sure to take care of staffing issues?
Correct, to start to move forward on some of these items.
Or change the example, if we approve the high school fees for the parking lot, things like that.
It would actually be 50,576 under, over, I don't know, maybe over short?
Never short.
Possible.
Possible.
At this point?
Definitely.
We're not done? So that would be, that would be where we're at. So would you guys like to discuss anything except items 25 and 24 in this document?
Well, should I let my whole members go through the committee?
I, I really don't have questions. We did at the PNF meeting, Karen walked us through, find by mind, that the administrators were there, if they had questions, we could ask them, they were all there and walked through them. So I don't have questions, but the other people do, necessarily want everybody to understand what's, what's in this. So if people have questions, go ahead and ask them.
Karen, we had talked about, you know, that, I think it was roughly $14,000 for hallway monitors. And, you know, I think there is some concern, all we need is one incident, we would regret pulling those dollars out of the budget. So I think that's something we should revisit as well.
And that one we can pull off too.
I would agree with Mark. I'll back up a step is, at the PNF where we went through the budget, you cited administration, Karen walked us through it, principles were there. We had a lot of involvement from leaders in the district. I would like to thank them because obviously there was some time well spent here, probably some precious moments of trying to find a dollar or two here and there. So with that said, no personal issues, it's just, would you like to look at a few more items, I would say the fees and the hallway. Were my big items, Karen made that coming into the meeting. That's why she worked on the other pieces for the fees and the parking lot and the high school. But I would like to thank her and everyone else for work that you did on this business. We have three or four months ahead of schedule with time to revisit and discuss items.
So what I'm hearing is tentatively we're looking to approve in this document, last items 24, 25, and 37, which would, which would mean we have 65 of this, 65,000. For budget without those items. So that's what we're looking at. Does anyone have anything else they'd like to discuss more in this document and pull out? And we're already going through the exercise, so there's no reason why we can't. Anyone has any level of discomfort?
We could always pull out the, we're gonna have a way to make it, make it an even zero.
Makes for better copy, right?
That's right.
Or maybe just approve the items that are the staffing ones and what the rest of them could have a balance to want to approve. I don't, I don't feel comfortable giving up approval to even 50,000 of the fund balance. Were you comfortable with the 572 dollars? That wasn't bad, because that we can find really easy, when you start hunting bigger numbers.
This, we did this last year.
Yeah, we, we thought, back to the table before and come back with different...
I mean, maybe I'm missing something, but not fucking conceptually, but my understanding is that we go through this process, starting really almost before the previous fiscal year ends, and we start to pull together the relevant data. And along the way, we make certain decisions from a PNF standpoint, then they're brought to the boards. And it becomes kind of a running tally, if you will, on where we stand. But none of this is cast in stone until the final budget resolution is passed sometime in the summer.
In July.
In July. So that even something which the board approves on April 27th can be changed in the final budget resolution or some interim decision along the way.
Yeah, all the way.
Correct. So I guess I'm not as concerned, if you will, about any one of these decisions from the standpoint of whether they become permanent or not. I'm more concerned about flagging the ones that may require us to think more, to compromise on other things or whatever. But whatever we approve tonight and the consequences of that, whatever the bottom line is, I don't think it's gonna be the final number. Right? So I'm not, I guess I'm not as concerned about the, the immediate amount that we're, we're approving. My...
Like you said, this was new last year that we brought this forward to the full board and actually, we never even used to bring this forward until July for approval. But last year we decided, bring this forward for approval so that the full board and public can see what we're approving.
I think it's good exercise.
Also, just to pull out, if you're looking at the sheet, the last item, although it's not numbered, but I guess it would be item 40, that's a big variable there, we're still assuming the cut from Madison of $150 per student. It's one of $3,000, a sweep, a huge sweep that we don't know when it will come out of Madison yet. So Karen certainly took that scenario, saying, let's assume that passes the distance in current form and let's break up for that now. So if it's something less than that, of course, it's gonna change our numbers anyhow, which I probably won't know until, who knows when.
And it looks like the end of May or early June now.
So that would be a big variable that we still have to deal with.
So right now, we're looking at items 24, 25, 37, committing those or perhaps more. Or approving it as is. So if anyone would like to finish their motion, they send a discussion or discuss more absolutely, or eliminate more of these items out, whatever direction you guys wanna go. Any thoughts?
Well, to move the ball ahead, Mr. President, I would make a motion that we move to approve as presented the recommendations this evening.
Any other motion?
Oh, a second there.
Motion second, discussion.
See, I wonder if we, we oughta carve out the three items from last year. The reason for that is that we and also the public are interested, will know that it's, that they're still under serious consideration. It can be discussed at the PNF meeting, and I just don't see the harm in, in approving it without those items. I think it's a better indication of our intent and our next steps.
And that's exactly what we did last year, Dave, and I actually sent in the motion for further discussion at the PNF meeting.
Would you like to make a friendly amendment to your motion to Mr. Chris' point, Phil?
I would be pleased to do that along the lines of Karen's suggestion.
Mark, are you okay with seconding that?
I am.
So just to be clear, the motion is to approve as presented items one through 23, 26 through 36, and item 38 through 39. Correct? Correct?
Correct.
Correct. Any more discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against?
Aye.
Motion carries with one name, please. All right. So onward.
Last year you ordered yep.
It's more like a true second.
Definitely last year.
Mark, do you...
No, I take that back, last year you voted no.
I did.
I'm glad you corrected that for the media, Chris.
You are consistent.
I don't, I don't vote to approve a budget at home that isn't balanced. I would do the same with the test case one.
No, that's a flaw, huh?
Really, you don't do the flaw.
Now she's gonna go back.
Can you email that for me?
All right, good discussion.
All right, good discussion, and everyone do your homework in 25 or 24, 25, and 37, please. Karen has all the details, as you guys know. All right, item H, superintendent notes.
Thank you. This evening, we have a quick presentation for about five, 10 minutes, we're, and we're gonna present, project, so you may want to, we'll get to see the the other seats and you can see the visual that we're gonna project on the screen. Of course, sorry. It's a tight budget. So back in December of this year, we had sent a memo to the board, informing the board that we wanted to try a pilot, it was called Flex PD. And what we were asking for is an opportunity to provide our teachers the flexibility of gaining professional development outside the school day, so beyond the school hours. And it would be the equivalent, the equivalent of the two professional development days that we have at the end of the year, which is June 17th and 18th. There was discussion with the administration at that time, and we felt that if they could use the professional development during the year, why not allow the teachers the opportunity to gain that professional development during the school year versus waiting to June 17th and 18th and getting the PD and then you're into summer. So the thought was, let's see if we can create an opportunity for teachers to determine what they need professionally to meet the needs of their students and then to go through and actually apply or take advantage of the district offerings throughout the course of the school year. Actually, since January, that's when we started this. And so what you see in front of you is the webpage that we had created in the district that teachers would go to to get the information regarding the Flex PD. And Kirsten Rose is here, and she's gonna walk you through a few key pieces of this that will give you a good flavor of just what that Flex PD looks like and the types of offerings we had available to our teachers this year.
First one. Moving forward with this was a lot of collaborative work between a lot of different people. One of the big pieces that came together was this professional learning catalog. And this was a document that details offerings, professional learning offerings within our district between January and the end of the school year. And so our teachers had the opportunity to choose from these offerings, most of them provided by our district staff. And moving forward with our district initiatives, for example, we have discovery education that we have recently contracted with a first description. So moving forward with some of these pieces that are our initiatives, including this is our learning initiative, the training for teachers previously. We would have teachers, this past year, our fifth and sixth grade teachers came in in the summer and we paid them to be at training. We were able to provide this training a whole semester later, six months earlier, for our teachers taking part in this, this part of these hours. Working with teachers on communication pieces, different tools that we have, different levels. So leveled from high school to elementary, early elementary. The other pieces that are in here are things like our literacy collaborative. So our coaches were able to provide extra support and learning opportunities for our teachers. We also have our mentor-mentee program offerings in here, some that were in district and some that were in offsite at brandier. So lots of different types of offerings for our staff. So I can scroll through, this is accessible web for district website under the staff tab, and it's called Flex PD Opportunity. So this whole website is right there. So the other thing that was available is teachers could ask for approval for out-of-district offerings. So we had a process for that and a form that they would file with us electronically, asking that we honor, that was actually shared. Publicly, let me see if this one will go. It looks something like this, a session titled, "How Many Hours of Description", and they would submit that for approval as an out-of-district offering, something that we didn't offer, but they found useful to their, to their craft, so.
And where are they looking for? What, we're looking for those courses and they wouldn't have to use them?
It very much depends on a lot of content, Jason, do you wanna stick to something, I have a list there.
Sure, so the courses that they would ask to be approved for varied, and it really was content specific. And that's some of the feedback that we received from the teachers, because when you think about differentiating PD across a school district, you're not gonna meet the needs of every single teacher. And so teachers were out looking for items, and we might have found some items that were being offered outside of the school day, and then we shared up some... being offered outside of the school day, and then we shared up with some teachers, and some of those made it into our catalog. So things like what great teachers do differently, that was a session that was attended, project leadway engineering, design and development readiness, personalized learning with assistive technology, interventions that work, assisted writing interventions, national science, Teachers of America National Convention.
Who's, who's putting on those courses?
So these courses are all put on by either, usually it's, it's, you can find professors, you can provide, you can see professional organizations that are just putting those information out there for people to attend. And generally, all educators would attend these, some administrators would attend them, so it's professionals who are experts in the field who would offer these. So it's no different than a conference that a teacher would go to and would approve during the school day. What you're seeing is that these are conferences that teachers, and workshops and seminars that teachers would attend outside the school day.
Do you see some of this has been some considerable conference we collaborate on, and different schools providing different, you know, crates, whatever it is, and they could see that, you know, there may be not enough people taking it here, but when you put together, you know, five districts, it might be anybody married, you know, twins, four women.
Sure. That's a great question, man. You want to talk a little bit about that, Kirsten? Because we had that same kind of, we had the same kind of conversation, are there opportunities that we could take advantage of in these districts in our surrounding area? Is it like a summer academy? We started throwing this idea around last year, and it's got a lot of traction this year, and with my point in Thiemsville, we're actually partnering up this summer to offer exactly that, an opportunity for all of our teachers K-12.
Yes. And some of the offerings in here, the discovery ed ones for sure, we have offered to other districts who come to see the work, to engage in with our, our teachers. Some of the tools that we have that we share are the things we're really trying to partner with other districts for, so.
So this, this past weekend, we had an actual offering here in, in our district, the high school, IMC. It was the Discovery Education Network Spring Virtual Conference, and we had sessions that were being provided by teachers here in the district. We had one that was provided by Rachel York. Rachel was actually in Washington DC over the weekend and did a virtual presentation across the country. There were about 2,000 educators and administrators from across the country logging and watched that, and our teachers were here in the IMC watching that. We also had teachers from our district make presentations, so I never thought of that, using multimedia in the classroom, K-12 digital literacy and citizenship curriculum provided by Diana Light. So our teachers are actually doing presentations, and the 20 teachers that were in attendance this past weekend here on Saturday, we're able to take advantage of some of these. There's 10 offerings, and these offerings are continuing to be offered and through rolling next year because there's such an interest. When you look at the numbers of, of hours that teachers participate, we have 2,800 hours of attendance in PD outside of our attendance, outside the PD we divide in districts. So nineteen, nine hundred and nineteen of those hours were from outside the district. So if you think about that difference, those are in-house district, in-house presentations as well. There's 29 different catalog offerings, 130 teachers put in more than 13 hours outside the school day for PD. And the idea was that you would put in the hours, and then you would not necessarily have to be present on the end of the year, seventeenth and eighteenth. There were about 47 teachers who chose not to do that and will take advantage of our professional development on the seventeenth and eighteenth. And so we're thrilled to have this opportunity to do this with our teachers. It's proven very successful. I asked teachers, my curriculum council, to give me some feedback on how well they thought it was going, and the comments were extremely positive, higher engagement and motivation, learning far more in line with our content area, doesn't feel forced, ability to choose who you want to learn from and with, recognizing us as professionals, personalized, context-specific, targeted choice, that's probably the biggest piece that you see when you offer PD opportunity like this, that teachers have choice. And so we wanted to let you know that we are excited about this, it's something to celebrate. What you're seeing is just typically high school, there's a lot of preparation that goes on behind the scenes, there are a lot of teachers that are teaching teachers, which is very powerful, and we're excited to offer this and continue it next year. We want to continue the pilot, we thought it was a success, and the feedback that we're getting from the teachers is very positive. And in fact, Kirsten was at a presentation, and I believe she shared our model with a national presenter, if I'm not mistaken, and maybe you want to share that story, Kirsten?
We were at the National Week to Conference, it started in Wisconsin, Week to Conference, and that's our Educational Technology and Information IMC Library Media Services Conference. And Rachel and I were presenting our speaker's story and talked about how our Flex PD is really fueling that learning initiative, and how we're able to start and get our teachers to onboard much more quickly, and to support them earlier in the process, and spoke of this and introduced it. And the presenter, that was a national speaker, came to our session and, and came up and said, "This is amazing." And her keynote was really about PD and how we can get better and things, so it really resonated there. She tweeted about our presentation, thought we were doing, Cedar was doing the right thing, so it was kind of affirming there.
I don't know if I would call it cutting edge, but we really think about just personalizing professional development, it's the way it should be done. It's, we're modeling exactly what we expect to happen with our kids. What do they need and make certain they get it, and that's what we're doing for our teachers. So I'm extremely proud of the work that our administrators have done, the approval behind the scenes, it's kind of Kirsten, myself, and Rachel, and it's been a lot of work. We've learned a lot of lessons, but we're looking forward to continuing this implementation next year. I will send you the link of Rachel doing the presentation in Washington DC, because it was, it's pretty impressive. She, she calls out the Cedarburg peeps part a bit during her presentation, which was pretty exciting, and she gives a lot of credit to the work that's being done here in our district. So we're thrilled to continue with this, and we're hoping to continue to have your support with this Flex PD effort for this year.
I think it's very interesting. I didn't know what this topic was, so if you just explained it now. It strikes me, the old system, the seventeenth and eighteenth, the last couple of days of the school year, and then the teachers go off the entire summer. I bet a lot gets lost over that type of thing. You were the best intention, oh yeah, this was really good, I've been working on that and it was months ago, and I'm back at it. And I like this, you know, went from a really static system to one that's much more adaptable for the teachers, that's what we're trying to help, if we can, so I can imagine a great process.
And a little bit, you know, in time, it's really powerful, too.
Todd, the instructors who teach these seminars are very competent?
Yeah, many of them are teachers who received training or have been part of some training, and they have to submit a form that, and answer questions, make certain that immediately that they are competent, prepared to make that presentation, though. Yeah, so there is a vetting process. You're just not open to anybody and say yes, it's not a little stamp, you want to make certain it's meaningful, and the presenters are well-educated and are prepared to present.
And that would include people who are currently district employees?
That is, I'm sorry, that's what I was referring to, district employees, yeah.
And then the flip side is someone from another school district who took one of our courses here, do they pay a registration fee, or do they compensate us in any way?
Yeah, we haven't opened it up to any more outside the district, other than the Discovery Ed Streamathon that we had on Saturday. I think those are all our teachers in attendance, but back in the fall, there were teachers from outside our district who came, and we did not charge them, it was just an opportunity for them to come and experience professional networking and learning.
They appear to like you to take this into our industry.
Charge it, all right. It worked behind the scenes to get that out.
I thought it was a recruiting tool.
Yeah, I was gonna say, those are the best.
Take the brightest teachers and steal them all the distance.
It's pretty exciting, it's, it's, it's the right way to do professional development. And it is, and it is, if you want to look at the cost, and actually, there's a savings in this, because we had, as part of our learning initiative, brought teachers in over the summer, and paid them to actually come and attend, and now we're offering those sessions as part of this. So they have to put in the hours outside the school day, and so we're not paying them for that summer curriculum rate. So it is, it's kind of a win-win for both the teachers and the administration.
We must be more effective to.
It's real-time, it's, it's, it's what they need at that moment, they can apply immediately. It's, it's, it's valuable. If I was designing a PD program and opportunities, this is the way I would design it, I'm excited that we're here. It's only going to get better, you know. We'll design some rubrics to go along with this, so when someone wants a proposed course, or they want to say, "I want to attend a conference," we're going to have them go through the rubric, and make certain that it matches what we are expecting. Because sometimes you get things that are submitted that don't necessarily meet the threshold limits, right? And we have to say no. And so we're hoping to give them some information so they can go through and look at that prior to making the submission.
Can we record them and have them available, maybe on the map? Making sure that they're not working this kind of thing.
Depends what it is. A key piece in a lot of these are that teacher collaboration. So as we move through these, you know, interactive discussions, so how does that look for you? What does that mean? Some of that's a little more difficult to record, but some of them, maybe. The, the discovery at the Verpon that Todd was speaking of this weekend, and we had one involved, those sessions are, are recorded, so there's.
Well, you could do is you could get a base of what knowledge they have, and some of the prior to, in that type of environment.
Sure.
So do quizzes or something, and.
Pre-assess.
Yeah, pre-assess, and keep that. I would imagine this will, that's pretty, that'd be good.
We do have session resources, so we're due to different sessions, resources for all that can take part, you know, didn't attend, but here's the presentation slides and the tools and different things. So we're posting those here, kind of as a blog post and finding things.
Nice.
It's a real tender-made PD opportunity for our teachers, we're pretty proud, and it's only going to get better.
The only two things I'd like to add, one, when this was brought up administratively, certainly resonated with me, because a massive of our mission is to create lifelong learners, and the best thing in doing that is to model for lifelong learners, basically. And number two, the, the huge takeaway, as I heard pieces of, of the reporting, is highlighting the exceptionality of our teaching staff. The kinds of things that our teaching staff are interested in learning about and pursuing on their own is, is amazing. And, and this is working, not only because of the structure is, is, is well thought out, but really the exceptionality of our, of our teaching staff. They're, they're amazing, so, you know, it's really, this, this is cutting-edge for a number of, for purposes.
That's it, just wanted to give you an update, appreciate. I have to, yeah. Thank you.
All right. Number two. And I, is there anyone from the public who would like to speak to the nation? All right, who's the area's disclaimer prior to the speaking?
In the past, the state attorney general issued guidance on how governmental bodies such as school boards should conduct public portions of their meetings. This guidance was given to assist governmental bodies in avoiding violation of the state's open meetings laws. The essence of this guidance is that unless the topic being brought by the board, by the public, is brought to the board by the public, is listed, and that means agenda, no significant discussion can be held on that item. Instead, the topic may be listed as an item on the future meeting agenda whereby discussion could then be held. The reason for this guidance, not to limit open discussion, but rather to ensure that all interested parties have equal opportunity to participate in the discussions with the full school board. We on the school board encourage community input, and we want to hear from you, our constituents. However, we also take the state's open meeting laws seriously, and will follow the guidance as outlined by the state attorney general. Therefore, if an item is listed on tonight's agenda, open dialogue may occur between the individual from the public and board members. If it is not listed, the board will be limited to listening only, and will not be able to respond to comments or questions. If your item is not listed on tonight's agenda, and you want to have a discussion regarding the topic, you are encouraged to contact the district superintendent and request that your item be listed on a future meeting agenda. As always, you are also encouraged to discuss any issue with individual board members on a one-on-one basis outside the meeting setting. If you make your comments to the board and to any individuals in the audience, please know this is a public meeting, and we ask everyone to address one another with the courtesy and respect you would like to receive in return. When you approach the microphone, please state your name and address for the record, and as a reminder, this is being recorded for the YouTube channel. Thanks.
Thank you. This speaker might be longer than my comment. My name is Jim Colicin, I'm at 415 Seer Point. I work with a number of people in the community for what's called the Cedarburg Destination Imagination Club, and I just wanted to update you guys. We had 11 teams this year representing each and every one of our public schools in the Cedarburg School District. We had 75 students. Six of those teams went under the State Careman, which was held in Stevens Point a weekend before this past one. Two of those teams have advanced to the global finals in Knoxville, Tennessee. They'll be going to that the week of May 18th, basically Tuesday the 19th through that Saturday. That competition has 16,000 people at it, fills the basketball arena at Knoxville and takes up about half the campus. So 12 kids traveling to that, seven from the middle school, and five from the high school. Thank you.
Excellent. Any questions?
I know.
All right. So, PD reports, policy committee, anything going on there, all right?
We made it through the 1,000s. Our next meeting's Wednesday night, and we invite you to come. And we're going to go through the 2,000s and hopefully through maybe some or all of the 3,000s.
So how many policies are included, roughly, in each of the 1,000s?
It's, it's different in each one.
Fifty years.
It's, it's.
I think there's over 300.
The table of contents for the 2,000s, it takes two pages. There's like 500, trying to think how many files I have, 534, 554 total we have to get through.
So are we going on the schedule that we, you know, had anticipated, or are we gonna some of the turnover, are we pulling back on some, or what's the thought there?
We're, we're just pulling along. The hope is to get them all done before the next school year, because we don't want to get into a cycle of having them come up with a new update when we haven't approved the last one.
Right, right.
So we asked that question of, I asked that question of Todd. He's been staying up late at night reading to get himself into this, so that we can keep plugging along and get them all done.
Trying to see.
Early morning.
Early morning?
We'll do it now.
Excellent. All right. The 1,000s are up, right? The 1,000s are updated on the access.
So if you go to any of you that want to look at them, the 1,000s that are posted now on our shared drive are the final ones. So if you have concerns about any of that, please let me know, because I got someone who looked at the shared app.
You guys have any problems, okay, there you go. That's a shirt.
And then the thing to remember is, let's, what I made, the, what's posted in the final version of the 1,000s is our changes to the Eola forms. We haven't yet compared, or we haven't done a comparison of old versus new. This is the new, you know, our final recommended version, but we haven't done a comparison to that one.
It's staff ass, but we're the end. So, and we still want to just ask, towards the end, we want to quickly just go through that, put one against the other, just so that we know we're okay.
Okay. It's a lot of work, make sure we manage every one that's.
So Wednesday night, please try it.
All right. Curriculum, right?
Curriculum committee, we met, we discussed the elementary schedule, the middle school schedule, and we also discussed the high school CPR program, and what we need to do to update that to get all of our students within their curriculum to go through the actual compressions. Before, it depended on whether or not they got that far in class, some did it, some didn't. And we would like every student to at least experience the proper way to do chest compressions so that, hem breathing, so that they, and if they do it, so that although they may not be certified and have a little card, if there was an emergency, they would have practiced it already and be able to do CPR, not to save someone's life. We also, the Spanish is a program with their update in their curriculum. Their new textbook is a digital textbook, so they are the first with our digital textbook that we're going to, and we have lots of questions on that, due to updates and things like that, and it'll be a good experience, and it costs less than a conventional textbook.
There you go. All right. Personal finance, and then we went over on Mr. Brady just now with Karen's document. Would you care to expand, or did we get pretty much everything?
I think we covered a lot tonight. I think we covered everything from that meeting, a good meeting, a lot of good input prior to the meeting, staff with.
We had a meeting, a lot of good input prior to the meeting, staff with, uh, administration, so thank you.
Alright. Well, at this time, I will take a motion after I read this, because we are going to adjourn into executive photo session, where it's anticipated the board will discuss firing issues and associations per Wisconsin Statutes nineteen point eight five one E, and two, consider administrative employee employees' performance evaluation, contract renewal, and/or non-renewal and compensation pursuant to sections nineteen point eight five one C and E. And number three, to consider performance evaluation, contract renewal, or non-renewal of an employee over which government body can restrict him or exercise responsibility pursuant to sections nineteen point eight five one C. Four, approve and exit, approve executive session minutes of March tenth, March twelfth, March seventeenth, March eighteenth, March twenty-fourth, March twenty-sixth, and March thirtieth.
Move to convening to close session?
A motion?
Certainly.
Is the motion a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries unanimously, thank you, everyone. That's nice, I want to, I want to, I want to get it way up.